All right, let's get right into Conduct of Business, item number 10. First, the receiver report and provide direction for the widening of State Route 35 from Interstate 280 to Sneeath Lane.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director, City Engineer, and Michael Cato here, Associate Civil Engineer. The study in front of you tonight was presented to the council last December and we're doing it again tonight to provide an update on the results of the recent discussions with various committees. The Surface Infrastructure Subcommittee, Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committees. In addition, staff is seeking council's direction on whether to proceed with this project or with this actually study. So, brief background on the study. Back in 2012, Cities of San Bruno and South San Francisco jointly submitted grant applications for the State Route 35, otherwise known as Skyline Boulevard, to the San Mateo Transportation Authority for consideration. Through a competitive selection process, the cities received an $850,000 grant to complete the preliminary planning design, preliminary planning study through the environmental phase. In May of 2015, the Transportation Authority selected a consulting firm to help assist in preparation of the preliminary planning study. And the study was completed in June of 2016, and currently the TA is requesting the cities to confirm our commitment before they proceed with the next phase of work. The issue regarding Skyline Boulevard has many to do with traffic congestion during peak hours for San Bruno residents and regional commuters. Skyline Boulevard is a four-lane arterial between intersections of Sharp Park and Skyline Boulevard and Sneeath Lane and Skyline Boulevard. However, Skyline Boulevard is reduced to two lanes, one lane in each direction from the intersection of Sneeath Lane to Interstate 280. And this reduction in travel, to travel lanes creates a traffic congestion. The improvements to the corridor has been evaluated in the past by Caltrans. In 1986, Caltrans conducted a study determined to project the travel demands over a 20-years planning period from 1985 to 2005. The report concluded with the recommendation to widen Skyline Boulevard from two to four lanes since the roadway segment would be operating at a level of Service D. And the level of service is designated by letters A through F, where A represents the best operating conditions and F the worst. The recently completed preliminary planning study in June of last year recommended to widen Skyline Boulevard from two to four lanes, which is consistent with the results of the Caltrans previous study in 1986. The traffic evaluation indicates that the traffic congestion along the corridor will not get better if no improvements are completed. The two recognized points of congestion are the two intersections within the segment at Sneeath Lane and San Bruno Avenue. The study predict that in 20, in year 2030, the intersections will likely be operating at poor level of service or E or F during peak hours. The traffic analysis also indicates that the existing traffic volumes result in long southbound delays, which is heading towards I-280 during AM peak hours, and northbound delays coming back into the city during the PM peak from communal traffic. The peak occurs between 7:00 and 9:00 AM in the mornings, and when the afternoon occurs between 4:00 to 6:00 PM. The preliminary planning study recommended several conceptual alternatives for consideration, and I'll just show you some of the alternatives here. Alternative, you know, zero, it's no project, don't do anything, just leave the Skyline Boulevard as is. Alternative number one is adding additional lane in the northbound direction using retaining walls or cut slopes. Go ahead, Michael. Addition, alternative number two is an additional lane in the northbound and southbound directions using retaining wall or cut slopes. Alternative number three was to widen the two-four lanes at just the approach and departure at the San Bruno Avenue and with some signal phasing improvements at Sneeath Lane. And alternative four is the same as alternative two but with some signal phasings at Sneeath Lane, so it's one lane, additional one lane in each direction, northbound and southbound. And then alternative five was to widen to four lanes between San Bruno Avenue and Sneeath Lane with some signal phasings at Sneeath Lane. So since last year's city council meeting, staff presented the study results to the Surface Infrastructure Subcommittee and the TSPC and the B-PAC to obtain their feedback. And residents expressed strong support and opposition to the study's recommendations at all of the public meetings. And at the Surface Infrastructure Subcommittee, they heard comments from two residents that opposed to widening the road and concluded that the further work should not proceed. However, the sentiment was different at the TSPC and B-PAC meetings. Many residents, approximately 18, attended the TSPC meeting held on September 6th last month, and many of those attending who live in the Portola Highlands neighborhood were in favor of the project and spoke about the need to alleviate the congestion that occurs during the peak commute periods. They were not only concerned about the congestion but additional congestions in the future as well, not the current congestion but additional congestion in the future. So residents who opposed spoke about the high estimated construction costs of, for the project's improvements, and expressed concerns that the improvements would only benefit only a small number of people who commute, and there are also unknown environmental issues and lack of bicycle and pedestrian improvements within the area. They also believe that adding roadway capacity encourages more people to drive, resulting in little improvements to traffic congestion. TSPC members expressed their support to continue to pursue the study by a vote of four to zero with one member absent, who is Jessica Barn Lopez, with the condition that the bicycle improvements are, or would be included in the project's scope. They also recognize that the next phase is funded through environmental assessment and additional work and evaluation will provide more information to determine potential impacts. The topic was also brought to the B-PAC on September 13th, where the committee members voiced their same concerns, and both in favor and opposition, similar to the TSPC meeting. The B-PAC also discussed, as I mentioned, as a sponsor, the city has a strong voice in shaping the future of Skyline Boulevard that could be weakened or lost if it's stopped. The B-PAC member expressed their support to continue the study by a vote of three to two, with one abstaining, and recommended that their support, recommended their support because of staff to ensure the project's scope includes a separated bicycle path. And staff is also in favor of proceeding with the next phase of work so we have a better understanding of the environmental impacts. The grant awarded to the city already has available funding, therefore the city doesn't need to allocate any of the city's funds. Traffic congestion within the corridor is not expected to be improved over time as population continues to grow year after year. And the next phase of work is an opportunity for the city to learn whether the conceptual plan for the widening of Skyline Boulevard is even achievable. The environmental study would provide more information whether there's any induced demand impacts due to change in traffic patterns and impacts related to removal of trees or wildlife. However, we won't know the extent of these impacts until the next phase of the study is completed and whether the impacts can be mitigated. And based on the city council's direction tonight, staff will contact the Transportation Authority to let them know of the results of tonight's action. The next, if the next phase is approved, staff and the Transportation Authority will work together to develop a request for proposal for professional engineering firms to assist in developing the project initiation document and environmental study. The PID and environmental study are anticipated to be completed by the end of 2018. So this concludes our presentation, and we'll be having to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jimmy at this time, or staff?
Through the chair. I just, I just asked the mayor if I, possibly if I have a conflict since I sit on the TA on this issue?
No, there would not be any financial conflict of interest.
Okay. I do have a question for, for staff. Jimmy, do, and I meant to ask you this, you know, at the subcommittee level. Any, any idea why the authors of this project did not include a pedestrian and bicycle component to this project?
Yeah, so this, the bicycle component was missed as part of the project, but we had confirmation with, from the TA that it will be included as part of the next phase of study. And the, the study that Caltrans did back in 1986 with the document I have here actually included a separated backpath lane as well. So, but as I mentioned, it will be included as next study in the PID documents, in environmental study.
Okay, and, and related to that, in the staff report, it says that the study in 1986 stated that it predicted in 2005 that the rating of service would be a rated D. And then, they, they did the study again in 2016, and they said by 2030, the rating would be E or F.
Correct.
And then, at the end of the, at the end of that explanation, it said, "The results of the traffic analysis show that the alternatives would improve traffic operations during both peak periods." Did they give an indication on what it would be improved to?
Correct.
Would it be improved back to D?
No. There's here, I've been sort of slide, but, so these are the improvements that are, it's a summary depending on the various alternatives, so it will be improved to B in the San Bruno Avenue and to, from E to a D, depends on which alternative is selected. So, it could be B or D.
Okay, so, for the, for the benefit of the public, in the alternative four, which would be, you know, four lanes and signal phasing, in the AM and the PM would possibly be improved to a B or a C. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry I missed that. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? We do have a few speaker cards here, public would like to ask some questions. Gene Leibor, Del Norte, Gene?
Hello, council members. I'm a San Bruno resident since 2009 and I live on Del Norte Avenue.
Okay, speak right into that microphone.
Yep, and I have a number of concerns on the highway widening project. First, well, there's, there's obvious impact on the environment, right? We'll have to cut down those beautiful eucalyptus trees, and also, the noise level is going to go up for residents, right, along the, along the freeway, and not necessarily to residents that are directly facing the freeway today, but probably a pretty significant area around it because today there is a hill and a row of pre-dense trees that blocking the noise. Also, I think, I also question the reasoning for the project because although there is obviously some delays during peak hours, however, I don't think it's critical. It's maybe 10 minutes delays, and I don't think it's going to benefit San Bruno residents. There are other exits. It's going to benefit for the most part the residents of Pacifica who pretty much passing San Bruno. And another point I wanted to make is that eventually, I think you said that the population is growing. I don't think it's necessarily true for this area, and also with the culture of ride-sharing and remote work, I think we're actually going to see decrease in traffic. I think that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Anatoli Kiyash, hope I said that right.
Hello, my name is Anatoli Kuysh. I'm a resident of San Bruno, Skyline Boulevard, and so we're, we moved to San Bruno about four years ago with intent to start a new family, and now we have two, two young kids. And our whole reason from escaping from San Francisco was to escape from pollution and craziness of San Francisco to somewhere quiet where we can call home and raise our family. So unfortunately, with a project like this, it's going to be critical for us, and if something like this happens, it will force us to move out from our house because we'll have freeway in our porch. We, the, the noise level will increase dramatically, the pollution will increase dramatically. The, you know, the eucalyptus trees that growing right now, they are really good for your health, and when we were choosing the house, that was one of the reasons that we bought it. And because we know it's really good for your health for everybody who has respiratory diseases and problem with breathing. And we think that over time, money spent for this project, San Bruno can benefit to all, a lot of different other projects, including but not limited to fixing roads, making playgrounds for the kids, giving to education, giving to schools. And once again, me and my family are totally opposite this project, and we hope you'll make the right decision.
Thank you. Elena Kuysh, would you like to speak also?
Hello, dear, dear council members, I just want to add to what my husband just said. So, we have two young kids and, you know, we're here to raise them and enjoy, you know, a beautiful seat of San Bruno, but unfortunately with this project coming, San Bruno, yeah, with this project coming.
I'll give him three minutes.
I think it will be pretty much a deal breaker for us unfortunately, because, you know, my kid's bedroom is facing the freeway, and right now we see those beautiful trees out there, and I would hate to see like a concrete wall or, you know, something like that, you know, sort of structure. Also, there is very strong winds coming from the Pacific Ocean, and those trees, they're shielding us. I'm sure if you pass by at the evening in that area, Skyline Boulevard, you will sense, you know, the weather coming from the ocean, and I think, you know, having that road widened and if something will impact those trees, that would be unfortunately a deal breaker for us to move out of the area.
Thank you. Tim O'Brien?
Good evening, Tim O'Brien, Florida Avenue. After looking at the proposed project, I'm against it. I think the money that will be spent on this project that San Bruno has to contribute can be used in other ways, like the gentleman said before, for our parks, our streets, our neighborhoods. I think it'd be more useful than widening a road. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Tong?
Everyone in San Bruno recognizes that traffic congestion is already intolerable and getting worse. People are screaming that this can't go on, what are they going to do about it? Caltrans' solution at the time was expand the highway, but that was about 30 years ago. By Caltrans' own admission in their 2015 report presented, that I'm going to present to you. Increasing the highway capacity is unlikely to relieve traffic congestion. In fact, it induces additional vehicle miles traveled in both short and long term, and it increases greenhouse gases. So the question is, how do we relieve existing traffic congestion without inducing traffic from outside San Bruno into San Bruno? Caltrans District 4 recently announced an unprecedented new bike plan, which allows local government to take the lead. The subcommittee recommends a rejection of Caltrans' obsolete auto lane expansion proposal and recommends a cycle track, also known as an alternative vehicle transit lane, which is generally limited to about 15 to 20 miles per hour in lieu of the auto lane expansion proposal. Our current infrastructure is automobile-based, and that infrastructure, both parking and transit, is already beyond full capacity. The automobile expansion plan requires a buy-in of at least 10%. At $35 million, that's about $3.5 million for the city, not including inflation. So please do not fuel the problem, but invest in the solution. The solution is to build new infrastructure which complements mass transit. Alternative vehicles like electric bikes, electric unicycles, bike share, scooter shares, they're already here in San Bruno. We need to build the parking and transit infrastructure for them anyway. I therefore support the subcommittee's recommendation and pray that the full council follows suit. Your decision tonight will affect residents for generations to come. Before Mayor Wayne and Councilmember Ibarra step down, I wish to say thank you for a quarter century of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Boone?
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I live in East Palo Alto, and I served previously on the City-County Association of Governments of San Mateo County Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I believe after you did, Councilmember Ibarra, and I've been following highway projects in the county since I moved here in 2010, and am generally dismayed to see tens of millions of dollars go into projects that the end result of is just more car traffic. Caltrans' own studies show that widening roadways and highways does not actually reduce traffic congestion, it just makes traffic congestion bigger due to the phenomenon of induced demand. People see, oh, the roadway is wider, there's more lanes on it, I can get to my destination a little bit quicker, so more people decide to take that route, and it ends up clogging up and ending up the way it was before. Look at all of our roadways in San Mateo County or the Bay Area. Are the ones with more lanes the ones with less traffic congestion? No. The more lanes there are, the worse the traffic congestion is. So what you're considering is to spend tens of millions of taxpayer dollars on something that's guaranteed to fail, meaning you're just going to have a bigger traffic jam. Other negative impacts include higher levels of air pollution, including greenhouse gas emissions. The city has a, has a responsibility to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, not increase greenhouse gas emissions. This project, adding lanes to Skyline Boulevard, Boulevard will definitely increase greenhouse gas emissions. You also have a commitment to making streets safer. Adding lanes to a street does not make it safer for anybody, for people driving, for people walking, or for people riding bicycles. A four-lane street compared to a two-lane street means more cars moving at a higher speed, and that's a higher risk especially for people walking and bicycling. And I was very discouraged to see that the preliminary planning study did not include any consideration at all for people walking and bicycling. Now the TA promises, oh, we'll do it right, give us the money, let us go ahead, we won't ignore you, I doubt it. This is a highway expansion project, the result of which is fewer trees, more traffic, more noise, more pollution. I don't see what the benefit is, especially considering that it won't reduce traffic congestion. Give me a single case, anywhere in the Bay Area where adding lanes to a road has reduced traffic congestion. Thank you.
Will Klassen?
Thank you, council members. Admittedly, I have not been invited to any prior meetings nor have I known much about this project. As a resident who lives across from Skyline Bruno, I've now been getting involved, but had I known, I would have been someone who would have opposed this from the very beginning. I do have to agree with everyone's comments thus far, and I just wanted to say that the idea of the, how expensive it is to can further investigate this when a lot of points have clearly been made that it, this is going down to Sharp Park, it doesn't go all the way to, it doesn't, it only goes to Sharp Park where it goes back to a single lane. So it just seems like we're spending a lot of money to just kick the problem down maybe another quarter mile down the road. The, let's see, obviously as a concerned resident and of Skyline Boulevard, looking out my front kitchen window to four lanes of traffic that would only increase over the years just doesn't seem like any sort of a real way that I would like to continue to be a resident of such. And it just seems like the money could go towards much better things for our community than investigating something that doesn't seem like it's really going to do much of any type of solution. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Lisa Colombo?
Hello, I'm in opposition to the widening. We clearly have traffic and transportation issues in the Bay Area, but widening Skyline is not going to solve this problem, it'll in fact compound it by encouraging more cars on the road, which has been a point that's been made a few times. I think we should be spending, you know, time and resources towards a solution that will fix the, fix the underlying traffic problems, and just widening Skyline is not going to do that in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Bishop?
So I haven't lived in San Bruno for a long time, but I used to live in the Pacific Heights neighborhood, and coming from a place actually in the East Bay Alamita where I was able to walk around safely, I did notice that that was a huge change for me, and I in fact was almost scared to walk to the bus stop and cross Skyline Boulevard. So I do think it's a terrible idea just for safety. I do agree with a lot of the other points that other people made in terms of the environmental aspect and the cases where the traffic has not improved even after a widening. But for me personally, I think it's just, it's just a hazard for people walking and biking and just basically living, you know, and especially the people that live right there, which I actually didn't even realize that they were that close until I went and actually saw where it was. So yeah, just please do not move on to the next stage and please opt to protect our citizens instead. Thanks.
Thank you. Adam Cosette?
I would like to urge the council not to move forward with the next phase of the Highway 35 widening project. The biggest problem is that adding capacity to highways is almost never effective at reducing congestion for long. Widens like this, like this one actually draw more traffic to the road, increasing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. Even Caltrans now acknowledges this, and this is one of the main reasons that the local chapter of the Sierra Club is opposed to this project. The widening is also pretty expensive, it is expected to cost at least $35 million, and San Bruno would be required to come up with a minimum 10% match of 3.5 million. Pacifica recently had to make a similar decision whether to widen Highway 1. Their city council ultimately rejected the widening but persuaded the Transportation Authority to let them use their funding to study alternatives to widening. I hope we can follow Pacifica's example. Thank you.
Malcolm Robinson?
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Malcolm Robinson, I live on Merced Drive, and I've lived in San Bruno for nearly 30 years, the last 21 up on Portola Highlands, and I spent 15 years of those, of those 21 years commuting to Silicon Valley to work. And I usually ride a motorcycle, so the transportation has not been an issue, but sometimes drive a car, and when you come back home on Skyline, it's two lanes, you have to wait a little bit, but there's usually deer there. It's, it's a really scenic spot. It's actually called a byway in California. So there's eucalyptus trees, there's water to look at, there's, there's deer. It's a soothing effect, and I think people should be thinking of that instead of, oh my gosh, I'm sitting here for two minutes, right? I would urge you to vote no on the widening of San Bruno Avenue. Check that, Skyline Avenue, I'm a little nervous. It's really not for San Bruno residents, right? It's just a few minutes wait extra for not even two hours. You gave it like 10 hours a week? Well, it's really not that long where traffic is, is a little backed up. It's about an hour in the morning, an hour in the evening. If you want to improve traffic in San Bruno, do something about Church of the Highlands, right? It's more for its coast side or Daly City. It's kind of a secret way for those of us who live in Portola Highlands to go up and down the peninsula on Skyline and 280 and then drop down to where we want to go and stay away from the congestion that has been created along El Camino Real and most of the, the cities on the peninsula. Widening Skyline will induce demand. It will bring traffic off the congested 280 up here on the hill, and we really don't need it. If you want to do something with this money, improve the Skyline Boulevard that we have now. At the corner of San Bruno Avenue and Skyline, the limit line is in the wrong place. It needs to be 10 feet further towards the, the traffic lanes. So many times when I'm coming north on Skyline, people just pull out in front of me because the, the trees and brush are overgrown. out in front of me because the trees and brush are overgrown, they can't see cars coming except at night when you see headlights. So you're driving along at 50 miles an hour, and all of a sudden somebody cuts in front of you because they've been shopping at Lennardis. It's really an unsafe road as it is. Needs to be repaved, the road is crumbling, there's gravel in all the intersections, and as motorcyclists, I find it very dangerous to commute around Skyline as it is. We could also use a street sweeper up there on Skyline. So if you want to do this money to widen California's 35, I highly recommend that you do where it joins 92 crawling up over the hill to Half Moon Bay. So it's just, I'd say maybe five, six, seven hours a week you have issues of congestion today with our bit of Skyline, but it's all weekend going over to Half Moon Bay and as well as commute times. So that's part of 35 that definitely needs widening. But our little bit of countryside that we have up here in San Bruno, I think it's fine the way it is, and I would urge you to vote no.
Gerben?
Hi. I'm a recent citizen of San Bruno. I'm very happy to live here. I want to tell a story of a little discussion I had with my wife. My wife works in San Francisco, and she's taking the BART. She's now very happy that her commute is much less than when we lived in Palo Alto. And one of the things that we were thinking was that it would be beautiful for her to have an electric bike and just bike to work, but the roads are so unsafe coming from Crestmore to the BART station that I don't want her to bike that way. This is just one family, one person who's now deciding to use the car instead of the bike. And if you want to reduce congestion, taking cars off the road seems to be the most effective, and this is a clear way to improve traffic in San Bruno. Thank you.
Andy?
Honorable mayor and councils, thank you for hearing me out. I'm, if you guys don't know who I am, I'm one of the rabble rousers from Open the S of Watershed. So we like to stick it to the PUC, and if may I remind, I told you this before, you know, we are one of the original San Francisco colonies here in San Bruno. I'm also the amateur historian. So first of all, I am a guardian of the San Andreas Trail as well as the Sawyer Camp Trail, as well as all the trails we're not allowed to traverse inside the watershed that date back to the 1860s, as well as coastside trails, which I look as two as one system. In other words, I by default have to come out against this proposal because you will reduce the quality of the experience on the San Andreas Trail, which connects to the Sawyer Camp Trail, which is the most popular linear park in San Mateo County. So that said, I want to give a little historical reference on what I see. So in, say, the late 1700s, early 1800s, we had the El Camino going through San Bruno, which went to LA. Eni, the mission system. And then in 1926, they were trying to make a true Skyline with the Spring Valley Water Company, this is San Francisco and San Mateo County, that would run up Sweeney Ridge and connect to where 92 meets at the Skyline Cemetery. That was the original route for Skyline. That was opposed by the Water Company. By 1929, Skyline was routed a lower route to the east of the lakes where we have it now and joins 280, goes through Millbrae, and would pop out, actually would go over the Crystal Springs Dam, which was built in the 1880s and survived both major earthquakes. So after that, we got the Bay Shore Freeway, okay? And then in the late 50s and early 60s, Mayor Fassler in Pacifica was pissed off because all the people go into Pacifica and pushed very hard for the 380 freeway to go over Skyline, I'm sorry, to cross over Skyline, all over Sweeney Ridge, and cut through the Crestmore Canyon, which is a place I take my kids all the time and sometimes, one time with Marty's kids. So then, of course, we had 280 cutting our city, as well as 380 which stopped at the canyon, which is why it's a big mess now, but something that Jeffrey Tong and guys like us who are concerned about trail connectivity and pedestrian connectivity look at as a future opportunity to connect our city, which has been divided by so many people moving through our area to go eat dinner elsewhere. I hate to put on a NIMBY hat, but I got to do it. By the way, I've been in hearings in San Francisco where members from the Sierra Club have came to speak against me because apparently hikers on the ridge lines ruin water quality. Sometimes people say, or maybe it's something you might have heard before, a consultant is somebody you pay a lot of money to to tell you what your watch says. And you look at this road, it slopes into the lake, so common sense would tell me that if you're really worried about water quality, widening this road will do a lot more than 1,000 years of nature-loving hikers on the ridge lines.
Okay, gonna have to wrap it up pretty quick, Andy.
Yeah. Well, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Calista? She was just, okay. Marco?
Marco, Second Avenue. I wanted to kind of co-sign and echo a lot of the previous comments. As a citizen and member of San Bruno, I'm opposed to widening Skyline Boulevard, but I'm trying to walk a fine line, and I'm also trying to appreciate the decision in front of you. I was one of the votes on traffic safety and parking. We voted 4-0 to pursue the study, but we voted to pursue the study because we had a lot of doubts, and I really apologize to my co-members of Traffic Safety and Parking if I speak out of line. So I'm trying to really address this as a member of the community and a member of the Traffic Safety and Parking. We voted 4-0 to pursue the study because we had a lot of the same reservations that are being shared tonight, in particular, as was shared by the city and shared by Councilmember Ibarra about pedestrian and bicycle kind of considerations in the study. So I wanted to keep my comments brief. I'm opposed to it as a community member, but really to kind of add the context in that we had a lot of questions. We weren't sure how to pursue it. We wanted to pursue the study to really get some answers to those questions. So speaking just for myself, and I really want to underscore that in respect to my fellow committee members, we had more questions than answers, and we wanted to get some verification of those questions before we pursued the, before we recommended the decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is Calista back yet? Laura?
Laura Davis, 516 Hawthorne. So born and raised in San Bruno, I've been traveling Skyline, 35, and 280 for years, probably in the last 10 years a lot more often. I use either that exit off of 280, San Bruno Avenue, or use the 35. And I honestly can tell you that it hasn't changed in the last 10 years. It has always peaked during the peak hours, and it always is quiet during the quiet hours. And honestly, making any changes to that, it really is a waste of city money. It's not a lot of hours that you really see a peak pack up. And I think like some of the residents talked about tonight, it actually is a very beautiful scenic area. And as you feed into that area off of 280, you come really into San Bruno as well as Pacifica, as well as Daly City. And most of those streets off of 35 also drop into just a two-lane road. So we widen it to leave a few miles or a mile of a four-lane road, and then we're back to the two-lane highway. I think money not well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess Calista's not here, so that's all I have. Anybody else? Michael?
Hi, Michael Salazar, Reed Avenue. I just wanted to add a couple of thoughts. Philosophically, I think that as a city, we've decided that we would concentrate any future growth within the transit corridors and take advantage of mass transit there. So I think any projects that would promote more driving, accommodate more drivers on the road, would go counter to that philosophy. I also noticed in the staff report, it mentioned that the funding source was really intended to promote shuttles and bicycle and pedestrian-type projects. So even though this idea was born back in the 80s, when I think we still had more of a automobile mentality, I think that's really changed, and that philosophy is different now. And this project really goes counter to the spirit of why the voters approved that funding. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. What's your pleasure?
I'm going to jump right in.
Go ahead.
Member of the subcommittee and also a member of the Transit Authority, and been on this council for over 20 years, and it's always been about traffic. We've had issues with traffic, public transportation, and just like the last speaker said, we've taken care of, you know, our public transportation, which has been BART, you know, and Caltrain, and safety issues along with that. I'm torn, I was torn on this because, one, I'm not really sure how it got placed in. It was paired with improvements to 380, which I think maybe a lot of people on the peninsula think that 380 needs to be a little altered so that it doesn't back up during that peak afternoon hour. But I did state that I really, we were concerned about the bicycle pedestrian. Also, it's 10 years on the CCAG-B PAC. These are the type of projects that are prime for bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Forget about the cars, because we've got the San Andreas Trail, and we've got a neighborhood within a mile of, you know, of that intersection, and there's no connection. So the decision at the subcommittee level was that, you know, we understand what you're saying about traffic and how it induces traffic, but we, I was torn that maybe we need to stay with the study so that we could stay, you know, so that we can really push for this bicycle and pedestrian component. But I think we can do it without it. And so I'm going to stay with what I decided on at the subcommittee level and probably go even further, because being on the TA, there are so many other projects and so many other millions and millions of dollars of which you pay into Measure A that need to make your life a little better. And one of them is possibly this city taking advantage of a shuttle program, which ironically is, needs to be in place for those residents that are on the western side of our community that need to get down to our improved, you know, mass transit. So that's the way I'm going to stand, and I'm going to leave it up to staff of how they want to encourage it or how they want to report it to the TA. But I'm going to say, save the extra half a million dollars, and let's look at other improvements that, you know, have been talked about, about Skyline Boulevard.
Irene?
I have a couple of questions first. On, is this yours or is this staff?
Yeah, I meant to say that I did a little research and, from the TA, and they had a Measure A Highway Capital Improvement Program, 2016 to '25. So there was a summary of costs of projects, and this project came in at $66 million. So I, I mean, I saw, you know, the breakdown with the various options, but at least the TA is looking at this as a $66 million, and then there's a footnote saying that goes up 2.5% every year. So, and then you're correct in saying that if the city really wanted to move forward with this, it would be a 10% matching fund. And I would say that based on these estimates, don't be surprised if it got up to about $80 million. I'm sorry.
Well, you answered my question, so. I've traveled Skyline Boulevard repeatedly this last couple of weeks, and I guess the difficulty is weaving through some of the conceptions that people have voiced. It's a two-lane, it's a four-lane, it's a two-lane, it's a four-lane, and from, I forget where now, but from, yes, but from Skyline, from College to Sneath, it's four lanes. So in San Bruno, for a number of, I don't know, I think it's a mile, it is four lanes. So the flavor of what I've heard tonight is, oh my God, it's a one lane, we're going to make it four lanes, and it's going to be horrible, and, you know, life is going to end as we know it. So I think that's an exaggeration. Well, that's, you know, we each have our opinion about it. I think it's an exaggeration in some ways. Yes, things would change as far as, you know, how would we widen. Let me, let me cut. I'm sorry, I'm kind of wandering around on this. We don't know. We say, I mean, there are certain things in here that we don't know about. That's why we do studies. I would like us to concentrate on the alternative that has an improvement of four lanes at the approach and departure of San Bruno Avenue with signal improvements at Sneath Lane. To me, that seems to help out with the congestion without destroying the eucalyptus trees, without doing a lot of other things, but it would improve this pedestrian safety, especially at Sneath Lane. And somebody was commenting how they had a problem with crossing the street and how they felt it was unsafe. It can be very frightening sometimes. So we don't know. That's the point of a study. Jimmy, how specific could we get on this study? Could we say we only want one alternative, or do we have to look at all the alternatives?
We would be looking at all the alternatives.
So it's either all or nothing?
Yes.
Okay. Let me hold that for a little bit. Thank you.
Marty?
So I went to the TSPC meeting and when it was discussed there and the vote. I've met with a number of residents the last weekend and kind of put myself in their shoes. But what I'm feeling is this doesn't solve the problem. It doesn't take everybody all the way to 280 where they need to go, right? If you can help me confirm, it goes to four lanes and then it, two north, two south on 35, and then you get on, try to get on to 280, and it goes back to one lane. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's just ridiculous. This isn't, this isn't a solution. We're just pushing the problem further south. That's number one. Then we get to the point where the costs, I mean, if people have been paying attention, and I hope more people start coming to these meetings as we talk about how we're going to make our streets better, how we're going to make everything in San Bruno better, we don't have the money to maintain our streets. And if we're going to have to pay 10% in today's dollars at $80 million, $8 million, there's no way. So I'm going to vote no for this. It's in our first paragraph, and I'm not on any of these other subcommittees of no end, but why can't we spend the money, as it says here, on the community shuttle? I know one of the first things I tried to do when I got on this council was pushing for it, but, you know, we need it. We need a shuttle. Let's improve things for us, because who's really driving this? You know, there's not, I don't think there's too many San Brunans that are driving and are going to benefit from this. We're making it easier for other people to drive through our town. Let's spend the money on our shuttle, on our pedestrian projects, on our bicycle projects. So I'm voting no on this, and I thank you all for attending. One more thing, I'm sorry, really sorry. I would like to see a study to go into how we can get a pedestrian bridge combined with a bicycle path over 35 into where people want to take a bike and ride that trail. I've done it a few times, but it is something that we, I'd rather spend the money looking at that as well as for the shuttle and other projects.
Rika?
This is a receive a report and provide direction, so there's not a vote on this item, but there is direction staff is seeking from us. It's gone to the TSPC, it's gone to BPAC, and it's gone to the Infrastructure Subcommittee. So there's been a lot of opportunity... So there's been a lot of opportunity and, for discussion. I think I, I've heard from a few folks aside from, one was the trees. I heard from a lot of folks about the trees, and I must say, as I've gone on Bryant and Skyline, there are folks that have also expressed that same concern if they come down about the noise, about the element and the freeway kind of being in, in their backyard. But another item I, I've heard about is about the money. So if the 850,000, I believe you stated, is for the reports, if that's not spent here, it's not as if we have that money, we can go do something with it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not as if there's this money in this pot somewhere, just don't want everybody to say, okay, so that means start fixing the roads. I just want that to be kind of clear. One thing, Will, you brought up, so thank you for coming, was, you know, really when you get off, it is, it is a one lane, okay? Then it opens up, and then it comes back once we get into Pacifica. So it's really a short stretch of road for, potentially in this first go-around, for us to get data and information, which is always helpful, because you want to know what you're planning for the future and the reality of it. And that's the 850,000 that is not from us. However, if the project was suggested to go forward, it, we'll just say 35 million, and what that would take for our contribution. For the short stretch of road, which is affected from 7 to 9 and 4 to 6, and I'm sure if you're on it, nobody likes traffic. I take 101 to and from work, and let me tell you, that's not even getting fun at various parts of the day. So I don't know that that will be the answer. I was, and I'm with the vice mayor on the subcommittee on the infrastructure, and so my direction to staff will be not to proceed.
Okay. So just for the record, you should know today that we received a number, and I believe went all to the council, of support letters through the city clerk that were mailed to her today. So it's, maybe they're watching ballgames tonight or something, but we did receive a number of support letters. I just think, I think it's worth looking at, and you never know what's going to come out of this with a little more study. There could be something that could really benefit everybody, not just the people that have to sit up there, because they do, but perhaps the bicycle people, perhaps the walkers. There's, there's lots of things that could eventually come out of future study that doesn't cost the city any more money. I think it's worthwhile, and I'm for sending it back to, to staff and say, let's take a, let's take a closer look, because I think there's alternatives now, there could be more with a little more study that could benefit everybody that we haven't even, haven't had, haven't even touched on this evening. So I'm, I'm for sending it back and, and letting it, letting it go through this process. That's my feeling, so. No, no? Anybody else? Irene?
Well, I, I am too. I don't know. We've said a lot of things, and we can imagine a lot of things happening, but we don't know. And there are some alternatives that are listed here that I think could be beneficial. And to do the study gives us information. It's not costing us anything. It doesn't commit us to anything, it just gives us information. So I don't think we're gonna get this one out there, Jim.
For, for the benefit of the public, Jimmy, can you explain again what this next step would be if we were to move forward?
It's the project initiation development, so they will look at the alternatives, because this is a, basically a preliminary planning study, so it was like a very, you know, high level study that they came up with various different alternatives for the improvements, but they'll dig down a little bit deeper on these, some of these alternatives and try to figure out what their impacts are related to if, if the, the project ever moves forward towards the construction phase. So they will look at the environmental impacts along the, for, for these, for these alternatives.
Would we get more information as to how, how, how it would, how it would be improved, instead of just saying it would be widening? Where it would be widening? What, to what extent, you know, it would go on the northbound and southbound? You know, what trees would be affected?
Correct, yes.
How tall of a retaining walls would be looking at?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Marty, you're not in favor of going for it. Rico, you're not?
Not at this.
Irene, you are?
Yeah.
Ken?
I'm gonna stick to my, to what I said and say, no, do not move forward.
Okay, I'm in favor of it, so I guess the majority of the council does not want to move forward. Okay, thank you. Item 10B is receive a report and provide direction regarding traffic safety.
If I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, this is not, I mean, this, we have representation on our, on our B-PAC in the county level. We do have interest in, in the shuttle program. The TA does fund, and CCAG does fund projects that could improve the circulation in alternate ways in that area. And so if we wanted to really pursue a pedestrian and bicycle connection between San Andreas Trail and Portola Highlands, you know, staff can look at that, the B-PAC can look at that and, and move forward with that. If we want to look at moving, getting cars off the, off of the, off of the roads and getting them to public transportation, we need to look at shuttles to get people down to, you know, Caltrain and BART.